Call the March Meeting of Board of Education to order. Ms. Hibbs, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Ms. Ashley?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Poland?
Here.
Let's all rise for a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This evening, moving into our agenda, and the first item on our agenda is information and presentations, 2.01 Parent Initiated Transfers. And Dr. Dugan and Dr. Shirk and Mr. Jaeger will be making the presentation this evening.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity this afternoon, this evening, to provide you a brief update on one of our categories of student transfers that are the parent-initiated transfers. Dr. Gretchen Shirk, Mr. Brent Jaeger, and myself are going to give you a brief overview about the Board of Education policy related to parent-initiated student transfers, how we implement that policy on your behalf through a process and an appeal process. We're going to share some trend data. What since 2006, what do these look like? How many? What's that trend show us? We're going to show a current picture, mid-February, what these parent-initiated transfers look like, and then we'll wrap up with some closing thoughts and any questions you may have. So with that, we're going to start with Dr. Gretchen Shirk. Gretchen handles all of our, thank you, high school transfers, receives those requests, and approves those.
Thank you, Dr. Dugan. Well, as Dr. Dugan mentioned, this is a quick overview of our process procedure and some data. The first slide just indicates the types of transfers that we're talking about. We have three basic types of transfers that occur in our district. Parent-initiated transfers, transfers related to our 21st century programs, and then program transfers related to English language learners or special education students who are, who transfer to an alternate building because the program itself is located there. Certainly, the basis for all of our practice and procedure, of course, is policy. Policy ICB, not going to read that to you tonight, but do want to highlight a couple of things from the policy language in terms of parent-initiated transfers. Transfer applications are approved for exceptional and highly justifiable reasons. The applications are evaluated then upon its effect on both the sending and receiving school. We also have additional factors that we consider included in board policy for class sizes and staffing patterns. And I wanted to mention at the secondary level, we also have, do take into consideration and speak with parents about CAESIA, Kansas Activities Association Eligibility Guidelines. In terms of thinking about the criteria for approval, when we think about exceptional and highly justified, we have some, wanted to highlight for you some typical transfer requests that come to us. Typically, it has to do with siblings attending the same school. It may be daycare requirements, and it may be convenience of location in terms of students being delivered, picked up from school, and another typical one is friends. Typical approvals are, again, based on siblings attending the same building, daycare requirements at the elementary level, and unique individual circumstances. In terms of implementation, then, to kind of take you through some of the upcoming slides that you'll be seeing, we have a transfer brochure that's specific to each level that's posted both on our website as well as available in all of the buildings. We have a transfer application. It's a one-page front-back document that's available from the boundary school where the transfer would be initiated. In terms of our transfer process, the process does begin at the boundary school. They provide information, then it's sent to the receiving school. It moves from the receiving school to the district office at the appropriate level. It's been nice, the fact that all three of us are working on this in terms of consistency and as well as alignment between grade levels as we look at transfers. From our offices, then, notification is sent to the parents, so it's a district action in terms of notification of transfer. And we also have an appeal process in place. As I mentioned, we have a transfer brochure. Again, this is available at each level and on the district website. Level-specific in terms of things like I'll mention for the high schools, it also has a page dedicated just to the 21st century programs because often there are parent questions about transfers related to those programs. The application looks like this. Again, a one-page document that covers all parent-initiated transfer requests, including employees of the district who may request a transfer for their student and out-of-district student requests. At this time, then, I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Brent Jaeger, who's in charge of general administration for elementary schools, and he'll highlight our data and some of those trends.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk. Thank you for the opportunity to share some of our information with you all this evening. I'm going to start by just sharing with you the information that Dr. Dugan was talking about, and that is our trend over the last seven years. You'll notice when you look at it that really comparatively, our data has been pretty consistent over the last seven years, with a small decline overall as we've increased our student population in our school district. Again, this is a snapshot based on our September 20th data for this school year. We also wanted to give you some more current data, and this was a snapshot of our data on February 14th this school year. Right now, out of the seven, sorry, 1,748 students that we have on transfer, that accounts for about 6.4% of our total enrollment in our school district. Currently, that means 794 or 6% of our elementary students. Middle school is 344 students, or 5%. And high school, 610 students, or about 8% of our student population at this, at a point in time just a couple of weeks ago. Dr. Dugan has a few more pieces of information to share with you and a couple of closing remarks.
Not in the slide, just some additional information I thought I'd share. Interesting to note, currently, currently, 78% of the transfer requests that come into our three offices are approved. So the flip side of that, about 22% of all the requests are denied. And again, you see a snapshot, 6% is kind of the range of the number of students based on parent requests that are not attending their school of residence or boundary school. Of those that are denied, okay, so that 22% that are denied, 31% of those are then appealed, so we have an appeal process. So the parent says, "Gosh, I got denied. I need to give you some more information. There's some more information you may need about individual circumstance." So 31% of those are denied. Based on additional information, about 78% of those appeals then are overturned and approved. So it is a personalized, very individualized process once we get to that appeal process. Families have some individual, unique situations, and they're talking to us individually at that point in the appeal process, so I wanted to share that as well. In closing, a couple of comments, and then happy to take any questions you might have. Moving forward, we're going to continue to monitor the trends. We've done a nice job of tracking this. It's a fairly stable process. We're going to continue to hone the process, to stay consistent, to stay efficient, to make this easy for parents to make the request, easy for schools to give us that input, and our turnaround time is less than 10 days from usually time of request to parents receiving input. Continue to work with our building staff, that they can give parents some good upfront information about what's typically approved and not in the appeal process, some of that kind of parent-friendly information right at the building level. And again, I think we've done a nice start that, this year, with having brochures at each level available and really cleaning up kind of the look of our application and that's understandability for parents. So with that brief overview, but if there's any questions, we can answer middle school, high school, or elementary level, we'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Poland?
If I remember right, part of this request came from overcrowding at one of our schools due to a lot of requests. Do we ever, when a school is overcrowded, do we ever reverse a transfer from the previous year?
Before that, before that question, and we have shared some information about the number of transfers in and the number of transfers out by school to see that, many cases pretty equal. They got the same number of transfers coming in as they've got going out. But specific to your question, prior to the approval, we're looking at enrollment. What's that class size look like? Brent's looking at the third-grade classroom at Ravenwood saying, "Wow, there's not space potentially." And so we're looking at it by grade level, by school specifically. So it's a huge consideration before an approval. We have not yet to, and this due to just the harmful effect it would have on a student, gone back in and said, "Hey, we're getting a little full," and start picking kids out. We want to take care of that at the front end and be proactive and not place kids that we may potentially be looking at enrollment. And that's certainly a larger issue than had been in past years, how tight we are looking at class sizes. So we're paying really close attention right now to those class sizes caseload issues. So it's a great question.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. This evening, we have another informational presentation, something that is certainly on the minds and parts of all of board members, I can say that without reservation. So it's an important presentation that we're anxious to hear about safe and secure schools, and I believe that Dr. Dugan, again, would be making part of that presentation along with our manager of safety and security, Mr. Laverne Fields. Dr. Dugan?
Absolutely. Thank you again, and an opportunity tonight to talk about our schools and the important concept of them being safe and secure. So Laverne Fields and I are going to share this presentation a little bit. I'm going to open up and just give you some overall thoughts. He's going to share some specifics about how comprehensive our safety and security program in this district is, and some thoughts for the future for us. So we're going to kind of lead you through that a little bit. Again, our mission, our promise, I'm going to cover some of that. He's going to talk about, Laverne is our strengths, and I'll wrap back up with our future challenges. Our mission statement, you guys know this well, this is our school district mission statement, certainly the fourth word in there, that we're providing a safe environment for all students. And we take that very seriously. We want to share with you tonight kind of the diligent, proactive efforts to make this mission a reality for us. Here's our promise of safety and security, just to kick us off, and we take this incredibly seriously, and I'll share it with you. Safety is our number-one priority in our school district. It will always be taken seriously and never taken for granted. We're committed, and this is an ongoing hour-by-hour daily process in our school district, to continue to improve and enhance our safety practices. As technology and innovation in our society changes, we need to be staying current and constantly being aware and improving our practices so we can honor that mission of a safe learning environment. And we're going to continue what we found key, and you're going to hear it in this presentation tonight and from Laverne. Key to us remaining safe is our partnerships with the community and the different facets of this district that we're communicating and talking, and we're all aware, and that's got to be the foundation for us and really fortifies our ability to maintain safe and secure schools. No better person tonight than Ms. Laverne Fields, who is our manager of safety to security, to walk us through some of the specific components that are our district's very well-thought-of and often visited, comprehensive approach to safety and security in our schools. So with that, I'll turn it over to Laverne.
Thank you. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation here tonight before the school board and our community. There are three significant approaches to security in our schools, and these are just primary ones. There are several, but we chose these three to be kind of the significant ones to share with you tonight. First and foremost is the existence of a school resource officer program here. This is a very strong relationship between the school district and the city of Olathe, where they have officers assigned to our schools full-time at the secondary grade level. And this particular program has been in place since the fall of 1996. Through the foresight of the school board and the administration, then my position as the safety and security manager was created in the fall of 2008, as seen as a need to further enhance safety and security for the Olathe public schools. And then another area that I'd like to share is that the utilization of private security, not only at the four high schools, but even on a as-needed basis for activities and so forth and so on, even at the middle, middle school and elementary school level when deemed necessary. Another example of a comprehensive approach to safety is continued by the development of our district crisis manual. And I actually brought a copy of our district crisis manual just to illustrate the size of this thing and the information that's contained therein. It's very comprehensive, but it's, it's very dynamic in nature, inasmuch as we are constantly looking and examining better ways that we can provide safety for the, for the Olathe public schools. But this is basically our how-to guide on addressing incidents that may occur at any of our facilities here in the district. This is probably a really good time to, to share with you what we consider a critical incident here in the Olathe public schools, and particularly with safety and security. And basically what that is, is any incident that occurs at a school or on a district, district facility where we must summon outside resources to assist us in returning that facility back to its normal operation. And so when we use the term "critical incident," that's all-encompassing when we're talking about mitigating any type of circumstance that may require some outside assistance. But some of the examples of what we would consider a crisis or a critical incident here in the Olathe public schools are utility failures, the loss of lights, the loss of natural gas, and those types of scenarios where we may have to call one of those utilities to come and assist us, get that back, back in operation. Any type of a significant loss of technology, for instance, or HVAC concerns. We deal unfortunately with a considerable number of child custody disputes between parents, and then we have the medical responses to our schools. And because of the numbers of students and staff members that we have at our schools, this is something that's going to occur on a very, on a relatively frequent basis. So actually, those medical-type responses are the majority of the quote-unquote "critical incidents" that we address here in the Olathe public schools. But then that would also include community safety concerns such as natural gas leaks, hazardous material spills, or responses. It could be even dangerous persons that are in the area close to a school but not necessarily on school grounds. And then technology also plays a major role in safety and security efforts here in the Olathe public schools. And basically, we have two types of communication systems, one of which I know that you, as board members, are very aware of, and that is the district crisis management radio system, which is a communication system that allows us interoperability, communication capability with all public safety in the Johnson County area, also all public works agencies within the Johnson County area. And this can be very vital, again, to addressing any type of critical incident that may occur. We are looking forward to actually completing that system through the recent CIP assessment and approval process that you are all part of, where you did approve the purchase of some more of those radio systems to complete our system, and we plan on completing that system yet this spring. So we're looking forward to that and very proud to be on target for that. Another piece that I recently picked up as part of our safety initiative here in the school district is that of coordinating campus radio systems for our schools. And that is just simply a cost-effective, very efficient radio system that is offered to our schools that can be utilized for all types of day-to-day immediate communication. It can be anything from monitoring recess to assisting with the dismissal of students after school to make those, make those processes safer and a lot more efficient. Our success in this mission of providing safety for students is built upon developing professional and organizational partnerships. And this is an area here that is truly a strength, I feel, for safety, for safety and security here in the Olathe school district, and that is the partnerships that we hold. When we look at our public safety professionals, there's none better than the Olathe police and the Olathe fire departments. Those professional relationships even go further than the police and fire. They go into the city of Olathe in general, and specifically, I've listed the Parks and Recreation Department where they hold the responsibility of coordinating our crossing guard service for us. But I could go on and on and on, listing various departments within the city that I communicate with on a regular basis, and literally, when we call, they respond. If we ask them to, to come out and visit, they show up. And that's always without question. So that, that is a huge piece of the success that we garner here in the Olathe district when it comes to safety and security. Then we talk about building district partnerships, and this is a huge, huge piece also. There is nothing about safety and security that's convenient. It's always calling upon our building administrators or facility operations. Whoever I call, I'm taking something out of their planned day. I understand that, we all understand that, but because everyone on this team understands that safety and security is important, they all respond accordingly. And that is extremely important, that that is, that is shared with you as board members and also with our community, how we are successful and how we consider ourselves successful in providing safe educational environments for our students. And it's with the cooperation of building administrators and operations service center, communications, you know, first student transportation, and the list goes on and on and on. I, I contact a lot of people on a regular basis to get advice, to get support, to make sure that I'm going down the right path, what have you, pursuing safety and security initiatives for the district, and I never get turned away. So that's extremely important. So as you see, when it comes to providing safety and security for a school district, safety is everybody's concern and responsibility. It's not any one individual who's responsible, it's certainly not one department. It's everybody's concern and responsibility, and that is certainly illustrated here in our school district. When it comes to providing safety in our schools, again, it's not an individual effort, but another responsibility that we share is to provide education and information to our stakeholders. And I participate, and so does Dr. Dugan, in providing bullying prevention presentations. We do a lot of cyber safety and internet presentations. I'm part of a three-member team here within the school district, the CO3 team, as we're called, where we travel around throughout the community, throughout the school community, talking about internet and cyber safety and responsibility. Stranger danger talks, and of course, spend quite a bit of time working with the Olathe Police Department and working with our schools in general, participating in those alcohol and drug panels, again, in the community, in our schools, and so forth and so on. So we're very engaging, and when it comes to sharing this information with, with the community, with our students, our staff, and our administrators, that that information and educating is so important to our effort to make our schools safe. So with that, I'd like to turn this over again now to Dr. Dugan, and she's going to share with you some challenges that we see in the future. Dr. Dugan?
I'm going to give Laverne a little bit more credit and give you a little bit more detail, so that's hard for him to do but easy for me to do. His crisis manual is, is so detailed, and if you have an opportunity or if we can get you a copy, we'd love you to look through it. Every building has a plan for every type of crisis. He reviews them, we meet quarterly, they have a representative. There are no surprises on what to do when a crisis or a critical incident occurs in our district. They're never welcomed. They're always a surprise themselves, but we are fully trained on what we need to do to keep our students and our staff safe, and that's a real thanks to Mr. Fields and the Olathe Police Department. We get information, the police get it, he's the first to know any time of the day or night. He notifies the next, and we all know exactly then what needs to happen. There are times he has us practicing, there's times he has us meeting and reviewing and debriefing, and there's no question that, that Mr. Fields takes safety very seriously, and we're awfully glad he does. And it's a real tribute to him and this process and this district's commitment to crisis management, that we, we are prepared should we have situations come up. And again, our relationship with the Olathe Police Department really is second to none. With that, we're a growing school district, you guys know this. And with that, we need to be thinking ahead. What are the future challenges as we grow to potentially 30, 40,000 students in this school district one day? The larger you get, you continue to have safety and security concerns and things to kind of keep on our radar. So at one point, we may need to talk about additional safety and security personnel in addition to Mr. Fields helping with that. We need to talk about, do we start a study and look at what other local school districts do, what they call a, a campus security system, where actually the district employs police officers. They work for the school district, and you don't have private security, you have a campus police concept. We need to start thinking and studying and see what, what benefit or impact that might have on our school district. The other thing is to stay current with technology and to see what other districts and places throughout this nation are recommending to us. Just looking at building locks and access control panels. If we need to get into places, is there one place we can do that from? Kind of improving our system and monitoring people that come and go from our buildings at different times, having that more of a centralized approach. The potential and maybe even a financial implication of doing our own fire and alarm monitoring centrally. We pay some companies to monitor that. Is that something we can look at, kind of centralizing, having as part of our larger safety and security system? And again, something as simple that we're working on in the future is in the next couple of weeks, having web access for any of our administrative staff, that from wherever they are and whatever smart device they have in their hands, they can access their building level or district level crisis plan. We know the plans, we practice them, we like to have them in writing right in front of us when we need them. And the technology has that available to us, and so we're going to get some of this access up on the web for our administrative teams to be able to access that very quickly from their homes. So a really kind of a large, general, comprehensive look at our system, but both Mr. Fields and I are very happy to take any questions you guys might have. I should mention, I love this, so I'll say it out loud. I turn it over to you, and I just took it back. The tagline for Laverne's email signature is this, that the race for safe and secure schools has no finish line, and it's one of my favorites, and I get a couple emails a day from Mr. Fields, and I enjoy all of them. But it always brings a smile to my face when he does this because he's on a race to make us safe and secure, and he doesn't stop very often. So it's a, a great tagline. So with that, now I am going to turn it over to you guys for any questions.
Dr. Dugan, I'm hoping you can make a couple comments, or perhaps Dr. Barry, about the role of social media, because recently, some concerns have come to our attention by way of Facebook or Twitter. And so maybe just for the people in the audience, you could kind of talk a little bit about our role in monitoring those sorts of activities?
It's probably the best example of our partnership with the Olathe Police Department. So certainly, the role of Facebook, text messaging, a variety of things. We have lots of communication going on in our community that involves our students that's happening in this cyber world, okay? When, when you didn't have this and you were listening for information from students and administrators and adults, that's how we picked up on things that might be of concern. Now it's being posted in the cyber world. Police Department, and there's particular detectives that are watching those pieces. We listen for information from students, share it with the Police Department. Parents are doing lots of that reporting. You know, we talked at Site Council last Tuesday night to our families to say, "We all need to be engaged in what kids are posting, what adults are posting on Facebook," and figuring out how we take these things seriously and how we investigate them and how we follow up on them as if they were conversations that were happening in front of us. So it's a big picture. I don't think we have it completely figured out. I think the cyber world and the communication and, and how that impacts our students and our schools is stuff we're still working with. The Police Department has been fabulous for us. They can make direct contacts to Facebook to gather information. It's a big part of their, their day-to-day business right now is kind of that internet, cyber world.
I think our principals don't hesitate also if they know of a situation, that they'll call a student in and provide some guidance or counsel or talk to a parent to say, "You've got something up there you need to rethink that's causing problems." So our principals are on top of that.
Our parents are calling our schools as a resource, okay, often, daily, from elementary to high school to say, "Hey, I saw some things on Facebook I want to bring to your attention." And we encourage that. There are some things we can take care of, we can certainly provide guidance and support and let authorities know if, if we believe there's any pieces to that that would bring harm or concern to our students. So parents need to be engaged, they're letting us know, students are letting us know. It's, it's a time-consuming piece of our administration right now in our buildings.
Do we have any sort of a hotline or a way that people can provide information anonymously, or does that not seem to be an issue?
You know, there's, there's different schools have taken this on. It doesn't seem to be an issue. Folks are reporting it pretty well right now, and we're watching it pretty well from the Police Department. Laverne has some Facebook access that allows him to follow up on some pieces. A couple of- A couple of our high schools have anonymous lines if they feel there's any bullying or threats, and actually, it's not anonymous, you get on the internet and you submit it anonymously. It is anonymous, but it's not a phone line anymore. Actually, get on the internet and send that in. One of our high schools has found that to be incredibly successful, so that's one of the things we'll continue to look at. Reporting is probably our number-one message, that folks see things that are of concern, they need to be reporting to some authority or safe adult, whether that's an administrator, a teacher, a police officer, the SRO, Laverne.
And I have one more quick question, then I'll let go. You talked about principals having their smartphone for access at home. Is that something the district is providing them, or is that something they pay the bill for on their own?
It is, we don't provide the phone, though, but we do provide some cost reimbursement for that on a monthly basis with an expectation that they're available to us and have data access for just that reason.
Okay, thank you.
It's actually a situation where it is a benefit, and so they are taxed on that. So they do have a phone, but it's, again, we do expect to be able to get a hold of them, but it is a taxable benefit that they have through the school district.
Thank you.
You spoke about exploring the concept of having our own security force and visiting with neighboring districts. I wonder if there's information that we've already looked at from some of the members in our consortium of schools?
You know what?
That's a topic that's come up at the meetings.
It's great. We have not, we are right now kind of at the cusp of looking at this and starting to study it, and Mrs. Ashley, absolutely, that's one of the places we'll start. We're going to look at our local benchmarks and then our larger benchmark, but we have not started down that path to gather that information, but that's certainly a place we'll go.
Thank you.
And not to dilute that at all, but we say priority number one is safety, but priority number one is also counseling staff, classroom teaching staff, and we have so many needs, but it's definitely on the radar.
Well, and having the city partnership with the resource officers is critical, because when it spills over into the city, then we already have that foundation built, so there's huge value with that.
We can't, and you can tell from Laverne and I, we can't say enough about our relationship with the Olahtha Police Department. They let us know as soon as they know, we let them know, they're there, they do about anything we ask, and they keep us informed all along the way and giving each other input throughout all sorts of situations. So, yeah, I can't imagine a school district and a city have a better partnership than we do.
That's a great one. And then, Mr. Fields, can you tell a little bit about if there's a crisis in a neighborhood like Briarwood Elementary has experienced potential, I don't know, civil disputes nearby and have been alerted? How does that take place? Do the police call you and then you call the principal? What's the kind of chain of operation there?
Certainly, what that chain of events is, is that if the Police Department is responding to a discovered something that's close to one of our facilities that they deem is a potential safety issue, then they will contact me. Either an officer or supervisor on the scene will call me direct, or they'll have their dispatch call me. In fact, we've got a formal protocol in place that I am the on-call person 24/7/365 if there's an issue concerning a school. And so once they notify me, let me know what that concern is, and then I evaluate that and put that information out to the schools immediately using our district crisis management radio notification system. And not only then does that notify that particularly impacted school, but these situations could become dynamic and may impact other facilities. So it's alerting everyone at the same time with the same information.
Great. And then I've noticed that you've worked, it's beyond just the obvious to keep kids safe. For example, Tomahawk and Briarwood and a few of the schools have the pickup systems that are so orderly, and they help on so many levels with potential custody issues and with children walking on the curb and potentially falling in front of a car. It's an amazing thing that you do. You bring a lot of safety on so many levels. So, thank you.
We have spoken about the Olahtha Police Department, but we do have some schools in Lenexa and Overland Park. Do we have, I hope, strong relationships with those police departments as well?
We have very strong relationships with both Overland Park and Lenexa, but obviously, the majority of our contact is with the Olahtha Department, but we work very closely with all of our public safety agencies, and not just the police departments, the fire departments, Johnson County Medical Action, MEDAC. All of those folks are part of our whole crisis management team, which I didn't get into that, but we meet regularly and sit down and talk about our plans and responses and all those types of things. So, yes, we work very closely with those other agencies also.
One of the things that you mentioned was the increasing number of custody disputes, and it would seem, I want to make two comments and then one for our listeners, is that we keep saying here right now that our first mission is safety, and I think back when I was in K-12 of Education, our first mission was education, and so there really are competing issues for administrative staff in building in terms of focusing on curriculum and successful school learning, but also maintaining safety. But it would seem to me that school secretaries and other office personnel might be some of the first ones who would experience a parent coming, a non-custodial parent coming and asking to pick up a child, and so do those individuals get special training to know how to deal with that? Is that handled district-wide, building-wide?
It's pretty much handled district-wide. And then, the reason I mention that is a critical incident, if at all possible, if there's a situation that might be questioned, or there's a question of the court document that may be accompanying that parent, I try to respond on each and every one of those cases as best I can and act as that liaison to help with that interpretation, and also determine if we do need assistance from other resources. So that is typically a personal response by me anytime we're dealing with a questionable child custody scenario.
Mr. Pollan?
Two comments and a question. First comment is, for the community, if you haven't had an opportunity to listen to either Mr. Fields or Ms. Dugan talk about some of these issues, invite them to your clubs, your PTAs, your PTOs, your MOPS groups, your, there's a wealth of knowledge and probably a wealth of, you know, I guess if I was to be a parent again, I'd have to say a wealth of ignorance that I would be experienced with and that they can expose you to. So encourage them. Like I said, I've heard Dr., I mean, Mr. Fields speak, wealth of knowledge out there, call on him, you know, and call on them, call on the school district to, you know, help them, help you with the promoting this safety. The other thing was, I guess, a question I would have would be, you mentioned something about promoting the reporting of, from the community. How do we encourage that to the community, you know, if they see something? Is, I mean, is it just an unwritten rule? Is it, you know, are we actively pursuing that?
I think in partnership with the Police Department. You know, the Police Department, certainly part of their campaigns is, you know, community watches, and you have, we can't help what we can't see and need to report. So I think we're in partnership with them. The audience we get to influence the most are students, and knowing that students are going home and talking to their parents whenever we can with parents, but our largest audience is students. And so we're asking them to, within the confines of our school first, let us know of things they're seeing that they believe put their safety at risk for any reason, or make them emotionally not feel safe, et cetera. We talked the other night about bullying and some of that. So really encouraging them to get comfortable making those reports. And then we talked at site councils, we'll continue, and the Police Department certainly does, to community members. And if you've ever had an opportunity to call the Police Department, their customer service is wonderful. They are listening and taking information and passing it on and following up. And so certainly, I think they're trying to get the word out to the community as we are to our learning community, how important that reporting is.
Last comment is, when we attended the joint meeting with the city, we've talked about how important the partnership is with the Police Department. The Police Department couldn't emphasize enough during that meeting how important the partnership they felt they had with us as a school district, especially in particular Laverne.
I told Laverne he got a couple nice shout-outs that he sure did.
And so, you know, I want the community to understand that, you know, this partnership works both ways, and it's a very important, and we've got a very, very good person in that position.
I thought somebody might ask Laverne how many Facebook friends he has, but...
No one wants to be his Facebook friend.
Thank you, Dr. Dugan and Mr. Fields, for that presentation. Very excellent presentation and great information, not only for the board, for the community as a whole. You know, we all assume that everything is going to be nice and safe at our kids' schools, but based on this presentation, we know that it's a very proactive program that we have in order to promote the safety and security of our kids at our schools. So thank you very much for that presentation. That would be all of our presentations for this evening. Thank you very much for those from, on the part of the staff. We have a little extra time here before we go to comfort break, so I think we'll move into our agenda. And the first action item that we have on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda, which are ordinarily items that the board can approve as a package of approvals, and if there's a board member who has any concerns, can ask questions about an item or pull an item off for separate consideration. Otherwise, I would call for a motion to approve.
Mr. Parker, I would move to approve the consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.09 as presented. Second?
Thank you. I have a motion by Dr. Daniels and a second by Ms. Martin to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Any discussion? Ms. Hibbs?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll take another action item this evening, which would be bids, contracts, and agreements. This evening, we have a number, we have eight. We can approve all of these as a package of eight, or we can remove certain action, certain bids and contracts and agreements for separate vote, or we can just discuss them and then vote on them. Would be the board's preference.
I'd like to discuss 6.06 and 6.08, not necessarily to remove them.
Any other board members have any questions?
There were some questions and some conversation around the bids for the Technical Education Center, and specifically, that focused around the low bid, so we might want to poll 6.06 and talk about that for a minute, those of us on the construction committee.
Okay, certainly. Then, Mr. Pollan would be, we'll just poll 6.06 as a separate action item, because there are a number of trade bids for the Technical Education Center, and I know there's, board members have a number of questions on those. So that being said, then, any other board members have any questions about any of the other bids, contracts, and agreements? Mr. Pollan, a question on 6.08, then?
Just questions that keeps coming up, you know, we're talking about iPad purchases. We all know there's a whole, whole other set of formats of tablets, and just want to make sure that the public understands why we picked the iPads as a format, what we're going to do in the future as far as assessing other tablet type of formats, and to make sure we don't get locked into one specific technology that we can't recover from.
Totally understand. As you know, Apple is really the leader in the tablet world in education. There are hundreds of thousands of apps out there, and if you ever start looking through them, you're just totally overwhelmed, there's so many. There are some coming forward on Android, but not nearly as many in the education world that you see with Apple. We do have some Kindles and e-readers out there in the libraries being tested, so that's another platform that we've really ought to kind of gotten into that testing phase. Those are much less expensive devices, but they're usually devices that you don't see nearly as many varieties of apps for them. You know, the interactive app, like a math app or a science app, those types of things. So certainly, we are very open to exploring any other technology that comes to us and we feel like is really appropriate in the classroom.
So when are we going to replace these things with iPads?
When are we going to replace these things?
Take it, you must be an iPad fan.
No.
We're very excited, we're very excited to move this project forward. I think we have a very solid plan with TNL in place to do some really good intensive training with our staff that are getting these and using them in the classroom, how to pick those good apps that meet our curriculum, follow through with the summer and get them prepared to put into the classroom in the fall, and then come back to us after the end of first quarter with the results and what do they see happening with these devices in the classroom. So we're very excited and we appreciate it.
Explain a little bit also about the security and the, you know, the, we have built into these, what, how people can go outside and how, what they can't do, what they can do with them.
They will run through the same internet filtering system that every other computer in the district has, so they're secured with that internet filter. You're not just going to go willy-nilly on them. We've worked on that. That was, that was kind of one of the pieces that we really needed to have in place before we even came to you with a request to purchase en masse. We really needed to know that we could secure them. It is a little bit more work for us to roll out the apps for these. If you have an iTunes account, you know, that's a personal account to you, and Apple has made some steps forward for education to make sure that when we're buying apps for the iPad, we're not buying it on a teacher or a student's individual iTunes account, that we're buying that on a district account. So if that student moves on or that staff member moves on, the app doesn't move on with them. So we've been working closely with them, so we feel we have all the security pieces in place, but they're running on the same secure network that every other computer in the district does.
Thank you.
Just a side note, I have my own personal, and I haven't been able to log on when I'm in a building. So that's probably by design.
It is by design.
Yeah, that's okay. Just, just...
Make sure we're a question.
Yeah, that goes, and I've been in, I've been in three buildings now and I can't log on, so...
Yeah, it is, our network is a secure, private network. We do have the ability to open the guest network. For example, we've had vendors here this week working on our new financial system, so the guest network is open for them in this building this week. So we have the ability to open that up.
With a password.
With a password, it is password-protected, so if you would like to have that sometime, you just let me know.
Okay, no, that's not necessary. Thanks anyway. But it is an amazing, amazing piece of equipment, so even for an old guy like me. So, any, so, Mr. Pollan, any other questions on 6.08?
No.
All right. So what I would like, then, is for the board, we would take action on 6.01, 02, 03, 04, 05, 07, and 08.
I move that we approve actions, bids, contracts, contracts, and agreements, items 6.01 through 6.05 and 6.07 and 6.08.
Second?
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. Pollan to approve 01, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 8. Ms. Hibbs?
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
With that, we'll take our comfort break now, and we'll readjourn, and we'll continue the meeting at 7:00 PM.
Thank you for your attention, and we'll resume our meeting this evening with awards and recognition. Always a fun time for the district and for the board. See all the great things that are going on in the school district this evening. I'd like to introduce our Director of Communications, Ms. Maggie Cull, and our board member this evening representing the board would be Ms. Lyanna Felter. Ms. Cull?
Wonderful. Good evening. We have numerous recognitions tonight. I would like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. Our first recognition tonight is of an important business partner, Commerce Bank. I'd like to ask Heather Skunover from Community Development, Megan DePola Allen, Benton Elementary Teacher and Administrative Intern, and Steve Skosik, Chisholm Trail Middle School Principal, to come forward to help with the recognition tonight. Commerce Bank has been a great business partner for Olahtha Public Schools. All area Olahtha district branches have connected with local schools or students in the 21st Century Programs. In addition, a total of $7,500 in matching grants have been directed to the Olahtha Public Schools Foundation. Specific initiatives have included learning opportunities about money and saving, taking in interns for our 21st Century Programs, donating to elementary, fall festivals, and PTO events, teacher appreciation breakfasts, serving onsite councils, and even allowing ...
extracurricular programs to hold car wash fundraisers at their sites. Connecting to our Adopt a School program, Commerce staff and customers adopted students in need and provided items on a holiday wish list. Commerce has connected bilingual associates to mentor our English language learners and recruits staff to be youth friends as tutors and reading buddies in our schools. Tonight, we recognize the following Commerce staff for their influential partnership. I'd like to ask the following individuals to please come forward. Pat Only, Senior Vice President, Southwest Regional Manager; Heather Whibkey, Branch Manager at 135th and Quavira; Spencer Kramer, Branch Manager at 159th and Merlin; Eric Freeman, Branch Manager at 135th and Merlin; Amanda Hertzemberg, Branch Manager at 119th and String Line; and Carmen Vasquez, Branch Manager at Dennis NK7.
Wow, they're all here.
And if you would all stay at the front, we're going to get a quick photo.
I'm impressed. They're all here.
And I'd like to thank you all for your dedication to the Olathe. Next, I'd like to recognize Andrew Shepherd, an Olathe Northwest student who recently won the Best of Show Award at this year's Celebrate Diversity 2012 competition for his multimedia presentation. Andrew, would you please come forward, along with Gwen Pass, Olathe Northwest Principal? Andrew's multimedia presentation won over more than 2,900 entrants in this year's contest, which was sponsored by the Olathe Public Schools and the Olathe Human Relations Commission. The theme for this year's contest was "The Courage to Believe," which was inspired by Martin Luther King's 1964 Nobel Prize acceptance speech. And now, let's take a moment to watch Andrew's fantastic work.
Dignity, equality, and freedom for their spirits. I believe that what self-centered men have torn down, men other-centered can build up.
I have the audacity to believe.
(music playing)
That people everywhere.
Can have three meals a day for their bodies.
Education and culture for their minds.
And dignity.
Equality.
And freedom for their spirits.
That what self-centered men have torn down, other-centered men can build up.
I believe.
I believe.
This is America.
I believe.
That this great nation will forever be free.
That I.
I.
I am free.
I am equal.
I believe.
We.
We.
We are the future.
That is just. And is your family here tonight, Andrew? I'd love to have them stand and be recognized as well. Finally, we are recognizing a group of outstanding educators who were nominated by the district for state and national awards. These individuals represent the best of the best of Olathe teachers, and we are thrilled to recognize them. I'd like to ask Kalen Kendall, Olathe NEA President, to come forward to help with the recognitions tonight. Honorries, if you could stay at the front after your name is called up, we're going to take a big group photo at the end. Our first recognition tonight is to honor Kansas Master Teacher nominee Julianne Bleese, first grade teacher from Ravenwood Elementary. This Master Teacher Award is given by Emporia State University and recognizes exemplary teaching across the state. The district nominated two teachers for the Kansas State Department of Education Kansas Teacher of the Year Award. For elementary, the district nominee is Maria Fotopoulos, a third grade teacher from Heatherstone Elementary. And the secondary Kansas Teacher of the Year nominee is Anna Lynn Morris, E-Communications Instructor from Olathe Northwest. The Horizon Award recognizes exemplary first-year teachers. The district had two nominees for this award. The elementary nominee is Matthew Ufford, kindergarten teacher from Washington Elementary, and the secondary nominee is Elizabeth Dennis, math teacher from Olathe North. And our final district nomination that we're going to recognize tonight is for Pam Mara from Indian Trail Middle School. She is the district's Read 180 Teacher of the Year nominee and is now in the running for the National Read 180 Teacher of the Year Competition. Congratulations to each of you. And I know many of you have your families here as well tonight, so if you have your family here, would you please have them stand? Thank you very much. And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Barry, and Ms. Colb, and Ms. Felter. Just pointing time on our agenda, the board reserves time for public comments. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect the privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded for broadcast on the district educational access channel, and audiotaped, recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. This evening, I believe that we have Jennifer Cole, who has requested to speak to the board.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Cole. I'm at 13108 Overland Park, Kansas, 66213. I've come to raise an issue to you that many of you may not be aware of, that do not have possibly an elementary student currently that's, and I wanted to make sure you're aware of certain issues that come in when a student transitions from the elementary school to middle school. My daughter is in fifth grade, and she's getting ready to transition to the sixth grade. She is a resource student. Currently, she can participate in many specials that are given at the elementary school. You have art, music, computer science, Spanish, and PE, Computer Science Library. She also participates in fifth grade in orchestra, and also at Benton Elementary that she attends. They have, their music teacher has an African drum troop that students can try out for, and she participates in that before school three times a week. Unfortunately, when you go to middle school, the big hype for the children is yay electives. Well, if you're a student of resource, unfortunately, your child is left behind. There is no extracurricular instrumental music opportunities, and you never can go back. Music is one of the fine arts programs that does not be classified as music I, II, and III. Choral music's available, so if you do excel, and hopefully she will in sixth grade and may not need as much resource in seventh grade, the opportunity for music in Olathe school system is gone. I'm just coming, as you look at budgeting and financing possibly iPads, to look at possibly that there is other needs for struggling students to get them motivated and have extracurricular activities or something during the school day to kind of give them a niche, to say, yes, I get something to pick. I am not just taking two classes of reading, two classes of math, after-school math and reading. Get them some type of motivation. I know my daughter has excelled with music. Her math skills, I think, are really keyed into that music. I know I'm not alone. There are studies that show music and math that are well-educated people that excel. The Quest children in special ed have the same problem, but unfortunately, you know, from an intellectual standpoint, they can maybe balance a few things. Those struggling kids, like my daughter, I'm just speaking as an advocate to say, let's try, as in Olathe school, not to let some of these children be left behind before they get to be a behavior problem that we have to deal with or an emotion problem at the home front, and see if we can team together for all those struggling students and offer some type of opportunity for an elective choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colb. Dr. Barry, would you ask the TNL staff to look into this issue and then report back to the board and see if there's something that we can do to follow the recommendation Ms. Colb has made, something that I was not aware of? And so, from the 10,000-foot level, I don't see what goes on in a school on a day-to-day basis, so.
We'd be glad to. I know staff's already worked on that and made some suggestions, but we can bring a report back to the board.
Okay. Next month, or would that be too soon?
No, we can report out.
Okay, so, all right. And maybe a little precursor to the board members as well, just letting us know kind of what the underlying issues are here, what's going on as regards to the school day, and just general information and executive reports, so we kind of know what we're kind of going to be listening to.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And I believe this evening, also, Mr. Poland would like to make public comments as well. Mr. Poland?
Thank you. Ms. Hibbs says, my time started two minutes ago, so I'm going to have to go real quick. I want to just address my thoughts after I attended the documentary that Amy talked about the last board meeting, The Race to Nowhere. As a member of the public, I attended the meeting as a member of the public, so I thought it was appropriate for me to share my comments here as a member of the public. I think it's important when a fellow board member feels strong about an issue, like obviously Amy must have, that's incumbent on us fellow board members or fellow participants to walk alongside them for support and for direction. So, I want to thank formerly Amy for the effort she put into bringing this to our school district. I know there's many, many more people to thank, so Amy, I'm putting that on you to thank them for me.
I will pass that along to you.
In short, the summary of the presentation was basically talking about the pressures that our kids are experiencing now, for those people that weren't able to attend the meeting. Some of the questions that were addressed, are we putting too much of the wrong kind of pressure on our kids? Is the pressure well-directed? What is the purpose of the continual pressure? And are they the child's goals and dreams, or are they ours as parents and educators? I have to admit, I walked into the meeting with a skeptical attitude. I don't agree with everything that was presented there, and I don't expect any of us should agree with it all. But still, it's a concern that's very deserving of our discussion as a community, and my hat's off to the people that presented it. Right offhand, my first observation was the predominance of voices from the two coasts, primarily California and New York. Just personally, judging from the state of affairs there, I'm not sure they are deserving of expert status. Nevertheless, some of the thoughts that came from it were very, very good, the voices that they presented. Number one, parental goals are not always the same as the kid's goals. Number two, parental awareness is essential. These are your kids, these are our kids. It's not the school's necessary responsibility, they're partners with you, to make sure that you're aware of what's going on with your child and in their lives. Some of the questions, as I was watching it, that came to my mind immediately, I heard them talk about, hey, let's let our kids be kids. We're not letting our kids be kids anymore. Anybody knows me, said, I had to ask why all the pressure for all day kindergarten anymore. I heard the voice of reason stating, no size fits all. We have to leave time for them to pursue their passions. So, I had to ask the question to myself once, if we're talking about individualizing this, how does a common core standard fit into what I just heard in this presentation? One of the things I have to say is, you always have to be careful reading into other people's problems. On the surface, the presentation cast a negative light on all the pressures to take AP courses, and they asked the question of why. If you remember, the increased opportunities for AP classes was one of the driving forces for our recent reconfiguration. I don't think there's anybody in this room or in this community that would regret the decision that we made for this opportunity. Point I want to make here is, you have to view these presentations with a very discerning mind. In the end, there was a panel discussion. I want to thank the people that participated in the panel discussion. They brought forth some great insight, and they shared some really good thoughts and pointed out some very complimentary strengths of the Olathe School District. One of the things was, we recognize that not all students will go to college, i.e., we have the Mill Creek Center to offer alternatives for those people, for those students that want to pursue those careers. Not only AP classes, but we also have the 21st Century Programs, which offer a great variety for our children. In the end, Dr. Gentry was one of the people that addressed it, and he refocused the responsibility of the parents and stressed the importance of the family unit. I thought it was key that when he was asked what he thought the schools could do to alleviate the stress, he redirected the comment to say, I'm not concerned with what the schools can do, but I'm concerned with what the parents can do. He basically said, hey, if you look at your time together, if you as a family cannot have at least three meals together as a family unit, there might be a problem. If your child doesn't have time for friends, there might be a problem. If activities are scheduled during those times, which are normally family times, like Sunday mornings, could be a problem. All in all, it's a very worthwhile presentation and is very, very worthy of the conversation, and emphasized the servant leadership relationship that we in our Olathe community share, and our school district share in developing our children. Our schools exist to assist parents in developing our children. I'm very proud of the partnership that we have with parents and our community, and I pray that we can continue to nurture that relationship. In closing, I was reminded of a quote out of a former school textbook. Proverbs 22:6 tells us, as parents, train up a child in the way that he should go. What an awesome responsibility we have as parents, and how fortunate we are to have others to walk alongside us down that path here in the Olathe community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poland. I appreciate your comments, and I think as a board, we would, in our topics for discussion, we can ask ourselves, you know, what can we do to help promote some of those ideas and model some of that behavior that was presented on Monday evening? So, anyone else in the audience that would like to address the board this evening? Being none, then we would move back to our agenda. So, we would go to action item 6.06, which are the trade bids for the Technical Education Center. And, Mr. Thompson, would you go ahead and come to the podium, because I'm sure that there will be a number of questions that we would need to address? Thank you. Board members? Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Poland.
Ms. Ashley, do you have some questions first?
I don't have questions, but there were questions from other board members for which I think members of the construction committee or Mr. Thompson would have responses to. Specifically, the questions went to what I will call the disparity between the lowest bids that we were accepting for some of the work on the Technical Education Center vis a vis the next highest bid. And there were some pretty wide gaps in there, and the question was brought up, is the successful bidder qualified to do this work? And we discussed that in construction committee, and I thought it would be good to readdress that for the benefit of the rest of the board members this evening.
I think the question is, are we required to take the low bid? Which was a question that was raised. And the answer to that is, no, we're not, but we're required to have good reason not to. So, our process has always been to try to take the low bid, working with our construction managers, who with your support, we've always been able to hire very qualified, very successful construction managers to work with us. Since the bid day... Since the bid day, every low bidder has been interviewed, person to person, face to face, across the table by the construction manager before they made their recommendation. And they feel that that low bidder has everything in their bid required to have a successful project. On a project this size, we were expecting around 50 to 55 bids. We received 86 bids, I think. When you receive that many bids, not everyone is as sophisticated as you would like for them to be, and there is some, there are some issues with them. But I can tell you that every one of the low bidders has been interviewed. Everyone that's being recommended tonight is not necessarily the low bidder, but is the lowest responsive bidder. And the construction manager and I feel that we can make a successful project with them. We're not required to take the low bid. We do feel that that's sort of our compact with the community and when we're working with public funds, that we do everything we can to do this project with the least amount of expenditure we can. We think we have a team that we can be successful with, and if not, we have a good, solid construction manager that can deal with those problems for us.
Any other projects that have gone on like this, have we ever been, had a contractor that could not fulfill his obligations? And if so, what, what has the district done?
Regularly. We have had, since the economy has worsened, we've had more issues than we had before the economy. But we've had contractors who can't, who can't finish the project on the schedule we would like for them to. All contractors more than $40,000 in contract have a performance bond. While it's referred to as a bond, it's really insurance. We've had to work with insurance companies, their bonding companies, to encourage them to proceed. We've had some contractors declare bankruptcy in the middle of our projects. We've been able to overcome that. And I have every confidence in universal construction company, especially given the fact that we have some time in the schedule where we have some leeway to deal with it. I think we'll be just fine. Are we concerned about them? I'll be frank about it, I think we've been concerned about every low bidder in the last 12 years. Yeah, potential problems with every one of them. We have very good construction managers, very good architects, and a lot of experience ourselves, and think this is a team that we can put together to build a successful building. And if not, we have the team to overcome the problem if we have to.
And if the bids are approved tonight, what's the schedule?
You'll see some activity next week. We'll start surveying, putting together some landmark surveying, and then you should see a lot of work happening starting the 12th over spring break. We'll take advantage of the staff and the students being gone to go in and start a lot of our work March 12th, the week of March 12th.
I'll go ahead.
No, I want to thank you for that, too, because as I was looking through some of the bids, and that was some of the questions we had, there was a big disparity between some that were as low as 300 and for the same item as much as a million dollars. And it just, it surprised me that there was such a, such a huge difference in that, even to the point of, you know, why would the contractor even be willing to throw a million-dollar bid out there, you know, even if they're just overpricing it from that standpoint? So, and I know I can speak to everybody else. We've got full faith and trust in everything that's going in the right way, but when you see that big of a difference, you know, you just want to be able to ask some questions occasionally and see what's going on with that.
As I say, we try to be professional. When you have 86 bids, it's a lot of bids for a project this size. Not everybody is as sophisticated, and not everybody puts as much work into their bid as others. It's still more an art than a science. We think that we've interviewed everyone we have, everybody we're recommending tonight we think we can make a project with.
Well, and we thank you for keeping the price down as low as possible. Now, you do know, even though we haven't had any snow, it's supposed to snow on the 12th, though, right? It's going to delay everything now.
We, mildest winter in 10 years, it will snow as soon as we start work.
Something's going to happen.
Just accepting that, we'll be okay.
I think for the benefit of the public, just so they know kind of what we're talking about here, like on a masonry bid, there was nine bids, and the range was from 338,000 to 1 million.
Yep.
So when you have that kind of spread, you begin to wonder, can the people at 338,000 really deliver?
You worry, yes, sir. But then, on the other hand, you do your due diligence, you interview them, you take their references, you check with the people who they don't reference but have worked with them, and you find out that, you know, at some point, you have to believe that they can do the work.
And you communicated to the Construction Committee that the CM actually went back to some of the jobs that they had been on, some of the work that they had done in other school districts, Wichita, and had confirmed that they were able to deliver at that price.
And, you know, that's not the only, I mean, masonry is one, but there were several areas in which there was a wide range.
I was looking at roofing and sheet metal as well.
You sometimes wonder exactly what some of the bidders are looking at when they put their bid together, whether they got their projects confused or not.
So that's kind of why board members are questioning that a little bit.
I do, too, but I think we're okay.
Don't want to be a penny wise and pound foolish and find out that they can't deliver, and then we ended up with a higher bid in the middle of the job because we have to go to another contractor.
I understand.
But that's why they have a, have a bond, performance bond.
They have a bid bond, and they have a performance bond.
So if they can't perform, and we do have to have more, incur more expense because they couldn't perform, then it would be covered by their bond.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I would move then that we accept the bids for the Technical Education Center as listed in the bid summary. A second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Ms. Ashley and a second by Ms. Felter. Ms. Hibbs, call the roll, please.
Mr. Shear.
Yes.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Mrs. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Pollan.
Yes.
Thank you for that bid. That's another milestone in the, in the path. I see Ms. Mudd straight back there shaking her head, certainly. So we've been on this path for quite some time, and Mr. Thompson, thank you for the information and for the good job of doing the bids, and we appreciate that work in bringing in the project on budget and on time, August of 2013.
Yes, sir.
All right. We have some action items. The first one is 7.01, student fees and miscellaneous charges for 2012 and 13. Mr. Hutchinson, would you kind of give the public an overview of what we're talking about on those? Thank you.
Certainly will. You have before you the recommended fees for school year 1213. Really, even though the summary has a lot of highlighted fees that are changing, there's really two fees that change. It just depends on what level you're at, if you're at kindergarten, elementary, middle, or high school. We're looking to adjust our instructional materials fee by increasing those by essentially $5 for a full-time student. And then the other fee that, looking for adjustment on, is the school lunch program, a student lunch going up $0.05. What drives both of those is a little different. The instructional material fees is really driven by, we have a large need for textbook replacement and material replacement each year. We don't really ever get to the full need, so we try to stage a small increase each on an annual basis. On the food service lunch fee, that's really driven by, it sounds strange, but we're required to increase by nickel. We have to have a certain level of local effort in order to get our federal aid. Not going up a nickel puts $3.6 million at risk. And some, one way to say it is, we're a little penalized because we're a little more efficient than most school districts in the country. So we do it cheaper, but they, but you have to spend a little more locally in order to get that federal money. So all the, all the adjustments really fall into those two categories. We left the other fees alone. We, in comparing to our neighboring districts and other districts in the county, a consortium we belong to, we rate fairly well with those, don't want to get too far ahead of the pack, and we've gone through a couple of years of increases in all our fees. So based on the economic times, we're only doing these two necessary fees this year.
And Mr. Hutchinson, can you talk a little bit about how we work with families who might find this a hardship?
Certainly. Two main ways. If you're eligible for free and reduced status, the instructional material fees, the enrollment fees are reduced by 50%. Then there's always a case-by-case hardship. If a parent steps forward to a principal or to us regarding any of the fee structures, we'd be happy to meet with them and determine if it's a temporary hardship or long-term, and see if some of those reductions are applicable as well.
Again, I'll state the obvious that says both of these categories, the money going can only be spent on expenditures in that category. And as Mr. Hutchinson said, we have more need than we have textbook money, but it could only be spent, no matter what, on instructional materials. And likewise, if we raise a nickel on food, it still can't be siphoned off and used in any other way. It has to be for our food service program. So it's very much contained in terms of what we can do with that money.
And that's always audited.
Yes, it is.
I would ask for a motion on the student fees and miscellaneous charges.
I would move to approve fees and miscellaneous charges for the 2012, 2013 school year as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. Shear. Ms. Hibbs?
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Mrs. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Pollan.
Yes.
Mr. Shear.
Yes.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Thank you. 7.02 is to set, action item to set a special meeting date for March the 26th for the purpose of a work session relative to the capital improvement program planned for the district at 6:00 p.m. Motion?
I move that we set a special meeting date for the board for Monday, March 26th to begin at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ashley and a second by Mrs. Martin. Ms. Hibbs?
Mrs. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Pollan.
Yes.
Mr. Shear.
Yes.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
That concludes all of the action items for this evening for the board. We have future action items that would be coming up in our April meeting, and of which there are 11. I will read those. You could go online and look at those if you would care to see what action items the board will be taking in future. Then we have some information, written items. Generally, there's no board discussion on these unless a board member has a particular question. The head start, which would be the head start, monthly director's report, and graduation, off-site alternate locations. Dr. Berry, would you just kind of visit a little bit about that?
Yes, in fact, I'd like to make a comment about that one tonight. You know, we know that we have challenges in terms of holding graduation because of our school size now and the unfortunate part of that. We have wonderful ceremonies that we put on, but we have to limit the number of tickets that a family gets, and so that's the real downside of that. TNL Division, along with the high school principals and general administration, have met to talk about graduation, and we initially brought this forward to you tonight as a written information item that we would like to consider for a year from this spring, maybe holding outdoor graduations. We now would like to step back from that just a little bit and continue our discussion before we come back to you again, but we at least wanted to get it in front of you and know that we are working on some type of solution. The other thing that usually comes up in our community is that we could take it off-site, meaning even out of Latha. There's no place large enough in Latha to have unlimited tickets and put on a ceremony like this. So districts near us, near us that do something like this go to Kemper Arena or something similar to Convention Hall. But again, for now, our principals are liking to have our ceremony hometown where they've gone to school. They would like to talk some more, that came from the high school principals, about possibly having it outside, but we'd like to revisit that a little bit longer before we bring it to you.
I think we'll probably hold all of our questions until we get that presentation. Okay? It's certainly been a topic of a discussion for my 12 years on the board. Every year, it's discussed, and I know from the principal's standpoint, it's difficult because when a family has a number of folks that they want to attend graduation, they have to limit that. That's, and the board members always get emails about that as well, so.
When board members have a limited number of tickets for their own.
Been there, done that, so. Thank you. Then topics for discussion, let's make it clear that that's not for this year. We're talking next year.
It might not even be 13.
All right, okay, all right, so, okay. The next thing we have are topics for discussion, 10.01, board members have an opportunity to bring up the topics for discussion that they, that are not on the agenda. Any board members have any? Mr. Go ahead.
I would make one follow-up comment to Mr. Pollan's public comments about the Race to Nowhere. One of the things that I really appreciated about this, this movie was that it didn't propose any solutions. It really proposed that communities start having conversations about what they want education to look like for their kids. And in that vein, the group that I worked with to bring the film to Latha is working on continuing that dialogue. And so anyone that's interested in participating in, in that aspect of it is welcome to contact me through the district website. My phone number and my email is out there. Thank you, Mike.
Mr. Pollan?
As we're continually always facing many times new principals at different schools, the question came to me is, okay, we always send out to the parents, you know, what do you want to see in a new principal? What do you, you know, what do, seeking input. Question came to me was, is that stuff really red? What do you do with it? So I just quickly asked Jim if he would address that tonight, how we, you know, you know, how that information is used so that the community feels that their voice is being listened to.
The parent input, staff input, both contributes to our overall understanding of school community needs, goals, desires. Gives us a perspective of how the parents or the staff, depending on which group we're running with, perceive those things. We often go through our interview process, and we come up with several very capable candidates, but making the fit decision, a lot of that works around what does the community see, as well as what do we see as needs and issues? That input helps us by letting us design the selection process. It may take the form of questions and interviews. It may take the form of follow-up questions on reference checks. It may take the form of selection-based, performance-based activities that we use, but it helps us then construct the interview process, reflecting some of the interests that we have expressed in parent and school community interactions.
Once a decision is made, then is that information then shared with the new principal so that he can say, okay, this is what my community is telling me that I need to address?
Once we have someone on board, we sit down, we look at the input that we've received so that they have an understanding of what kinds of things the parents and staff have shared with us, so that they understand, you know, what the expectation was that we communicated to us. So they have a way of then reading the group, understanding what's going on, maybe knowing the areas they need to maybe pay more attention to as the first few days, their first meetings, their first semester.
Good. Thank you, I appreciate that.
I would add to Mike's comments that I had a parent thank me for the district soliciting input from a parent. She's at Cedar Creek Elementary, and she very much appreciated having the opportunity to provide that input. So it's kind of at the other end of the spectrum, and I thanked her for that.
And along those same lines, I appreciate Mr. Pollan bringing that up. And as I just sit here and reflect back on all of the principals that I have watched, hired, and go to work, and our principals are really our generals. They're, they're in those buildings, and how the principal goes is how the building goes. And over the years, we've had some really, really good fits, and we've had some not-so-good fits. And those things always flesh themselves out, and so it's important that during that selection process that we find a candidate that fits the population, because all the populations are different. The communities are different, even though we think they're all in the same community, they're not. There are a lot, a lot of differences in all of our schools. So it's important that we have a good fit, so. Any, any other topics for discussion? Dr. Berry?
After I make one.
This is always entertaining.
No report tonight.
Okay. Do we, are we here about snow days? What's with the snow days? What you, I gotta, I gotta ask you a question. I bought a snow blower. And that put the kibosh on snow days this year.
You just heard it, March 12th. That's a superintendent's snow when it snows during spring break like that. That's great. That's a superintendent's snow when it snows during spring break like that, that's great. After I make a quick announcement first, I want to kind of use my time to make a legislative report to you tonight, but the announcement is that the City of Champions, the School District of Champions, has a new member in Olathe North today, won the state bowling title on the boys' side, so that's. Actually, actually, the Olathe North girls missed it, finished second in the state. Last year, East won the bowling title, so it's always nice for our students to go down to Wichita in the heart of that bowling capital and, and win the title and come back out of there, so. Want to make, again, my comments based on what's happening in the legislature and first start on the federal level.
I just want to stop them in on that bowling. You know, we kind of, we, we, those kids have found something that they get excited about.
That's right.
And when we talk about kids being excited about being in school, and being engaged, and coming to school, and doing their work, and bowling is an outlet for them, and it's just, it's so powerful, so go ahead.
We're considering cheerleaders and drill team for that next year. The waiver for the state of Kansas, Dr. Daniels, that wasn't. The waiver for the state of Kansas has been received now in Washington, and so that's going to be real important in terms of No Child Left Behind, and it's quite a lengthy waiver that's been submitted, but one of the key things in it for us, and again, it kind of fits in with what was already shared tonight in terms of the Race to Nowhere and so forth, is that the measure for growth and achievement of our kids is going to be much more than just a single testing measurement, and that's exciting because, again, any given day when that kid sits down to take that test, and we put so much on that score, there's so much more going on in our schools besides just the test score, so that's exciting for us in the state of Kansas. In terms of our state legislature, we really are kind of at halftime. They've finished the turnaround now, the break they've had, they started back up again today, and I just want to touch on a number of bills very quickly and let you kind of know what's going on with some of those. The substitute for Senate Bill 393 dealt with the governor's plan for vocational schools, and we like the amendment that has been attached to it, and it was passed by the Senate 40 to 0. But what it does is it maintains the weighting of halftime payment for all of our vocational kids, and it also took away that duplicative clause that you couldn't be within 30 miles of a junior college, community college, that was offering the same program, so that really, we think, helps, so we look for the House to hopefully push that through as well. Things are starting to, to happen now in terms of finance a little bit. The governor's plan is still being worked, but in addition, Senate Bill 364 and House Bill 2594 both contain the same language, so again, there's some work being done on both sides, and what this bill does is it increases the basic state aid per pupil to 4,079 in the year 13, 14, and it puts in a clause to increase it 2% for every year after that. It raises the contingency to 30%, which I find interesting because we don't have any money at all that we could put in to raise our contingency. It also increases, though, the LOB to 35%. It does have a clause in there, though, that above 31, which we're at 31, there wouldn't be any state aid for that next 4% and moving up. But again, similar bill on both sides. Also today, the Senate Ways and Means passed out a new bill, introduced it, that for the next two years, they would increase spending $74 per pupil. They would also raise the LOB cap to 33% next year, 35% the next year. So again, it just came out of Ways and Means, but things are starting to be, happen a little bit and talked about, maybe.
Raising the LOB, is that subject to protest petition?
It would be subject to protest petition, but not an election upfront. The hearings are going to be held next Wednesday, so we'll certainly be watching that. Wanted now turn to one, a note that I sent you in terms of a bill, Senate Bill 317, that's excluding the trade fixtures from property, and that's so important to us, and the letter came from our county assessor, what that would do to our valuations in our community. He anticipated that Johnson County, it would range a mill level increase between 5 and 14 mills, because it's taking that off the rules, reducing our value, so again, if you have the same rate times a lower value, you're either going to get less dollars or you have to move up the mill rate. House Bill 2645 is going to require financial literacy being taught in all of our schools. Not against that at all, however, KASB opposes it because it's another unfunded mandate. It would cost us dollars to develop curriculum or to bring in a curriculum and have someone to teach it, not to mention the time. House Bill 2400 is something that we're also watching, and hearings have been held, and again, KASB opposes this, but it's changing the definition for at-risk and taking away the weighting and making it proficiency. So follow this with me. We have a student who needs some extra help. We get a little bit of vocation, I mean, weighting money then to help that student. The student does better, the money for that support goes away, so the student may not perform as well the next year in class, he becomes not proficient again, he or she, and then the money would kick in. It would be a roller coaster in terms of, right now, it's a more stable definition, at least, so that our kids can get the help they need. Another one that we watched, House Bill 2245 is now, the committee has voted to not consider it, but want to share it with you at least, because you've probably heard about it, it would restrict promotion of fourth graders solely based on the state reading test. So again, that, that would, we're not afraid of that because we work hard to get all of our kids to read, obviously, and at the state level, we're actually test, test kids at the second grade level, but to have a single measure be the sole reason to not promote a kid, we had some concerns about. And finally, Senate Bill 259, we are watching, as a lot of school districts are, because that's going to be the extension of CAPERS to allow people who are retired to continue to work. That sun sets this year if we don't have it. We have some employees who retired from another district and who are working in our district, and we count on them. Statewide, the number of spots that would be lost if this doesn't go through would be very critical to education, so we're certainly watching that. Last thing I want to mention in terms of legislation is that this Saturday at City Hall, starts at 9:30 with a continental breakfast and coffee with your legislators, but there'll be a forum here in Olathe that runs from 10 to 11, and scheduled to attend are Julia Lynn, Ray Merrick, and State Representatives Arlen Siegfried, Mike Kegel, Bob Montgomery, and Lance Kinzer. So it's a chance that we have locally here to go have coffee 9:30 in an hour forum where we have a chance to ask some questions. So if that works for your schedule, and I know we're trying to promote it in other ways, we certainly like to see people there. So I'm not sure if that was fun tonight, but that was my report, all right?
I have one more thing I should add, and I forgot to mention it in board member comments, and that is, I think most of you are aware, I serve on the Kansas Association of School Boards, Board of Directors representing the Olathe School District, and the, I guess the executive director, John Heim, has decided it would be beneficial to the members of the Board of Directors to hear from the various vice presidents about their regions, and so they are allotting, beginning with the meeting on March 10th, 30 minutes at the Board of Directors meeting for a region to report out on what's going on in their region. So I volunteered to do the first one, and I'm going to be working with Dr. Berry and staff to put that presentation together, and with the hope that they come away with a better understanding of what goes on in the Olathe School District, and that I don't further alienate them about Johnson County.
We should note that, that we are our own region, so Rita will be presenting just on the Olathe School District.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy, that's a good point. The highest enrollment, five districts in the state each have their own position on the Board of Directors, so that includes Blue Valley, Shawnee Mission, Olathe, Kansas City, Kansas, and Wichita, and we each then represent that district individually. All the other regions have more than one school district in their region.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley, appreciate you taking the time to serve on that. I know it takes a lot of time, a lot of trips to Topeka and other places. Dr. Berry, executive session this evening?
I would ask for 30 minutes, please.
I would need a motion. I'd move that the board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, and to discuss matters relating to employer, employee negotiations, and that the board will return to regular meeting at, what, 8:20? In this room, the executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and to protect the district's right to the confidentiality of its negotiating position in the public interest.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Poland and a second by Ms. Martin. Ms. Hibbs?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?